Good evening, I'd like to call the August 4th, 2022 North Hills Board of Education Committee Meeting with Action. I'll ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence and move to the floor.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'd like to announce that the Board met an executive session on July 28th, 2022 to discuss personnel and legal matters. And before we continue with Board Member comments, I just wanted to provide a brief update on the Town Hall, since this is our first meeting since we had the Town Hall. And my update is that the Board is waiting on a report. We're waiting for the transcript from the court reporter to complete the report along with the comments from the public. And then we will be reviewing this report, and the Board has also requested of the administration that this report be made public, so everybody will be able to review it as well. And then that's pretty much the extent of my update this time, and we will provide other updates as we have. Are there any other Board Member comments this evening? Okay, then I will move that the Board approved the minutes of the June 2nd, 2022 Committee Meeting with Action and the June 9th, 2022 Legislative Meeting for the Attached. Please, Mrs. Spade, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Manarino, you are up with the superintendent's report.
So, welcome back. This is a lot of back-to-school stuff, is what's in the report today. So, just so we know, August 24th is the first day of school, and it makes me sick to say that that is 20 days away from today. Our new teachers' report on Tuesday, the teaching faculty reports the following Tuesday. Mr. Santucci looks very depressed there because he's also a teacher. You're starting soon as well, I'm sorry, buddy. Alright, so teacher assignments, schedules, and transportation information is in Power School. If you are a high school student or parent, your information is available now. The middle school information will be available on Monday, August 8th, and then we're really hopeful that our elementary schedules are completed, and that information is out to parents by the 15th. So, that's where you will be seeing your schedules as we move forward. iPad distribution is scheduled for the first day of school. With that, we also know that we are going to have a significant number of high school students on campus as athletics and activities begin here, I think, on Monday. And so iPads will actually be available to our high school students since they're going to be on campus on August 11th and again on the August 15th. So, if you want your iPad a couple of days early as a high school student, we can make that happen for you. If not, you will be receiving them in your social studies classes, 6 through 7 through 12, K through 6, even though 6th grade is at the middle school. That'll be within your homeroom. So, that's how they will be distributed to the students on the first day of school. I want to just remind everybody again about iPad insurance, that the iPads are not owned by the district. It is a leased device. And that insurance is simply for damages. It's an $800 device. So, the $35 insurance policy is minimal to the damage that can occur to just a screen is $120. So, that insurance is important. Families are liable for all damage and repair costs. So, if without that insurance, your first breakage is going to be $125 for that screen. We've also seen them come back total, just like a vehicle. That's full replacement cost to the family, which is an $800 item. I'd prefer you pay the $35 insurance, cover yourself with that, and that way we can help you through the repair issues with those devices. That does not include intentional damage to the iPad, which we've seen people try to fold them, bend them over their desk, and do all of those things. It's a reminder that these devices are not owned by the district, and intentional damage is full restitution of the device. So, please pay attention to that as we move forward. The insurance is strongly encouraged, and the enrollment details are on our website. Orientations come along with our back-to-school days. The high school orientations for 9th graders and new students is August 9th at 9:00 a.m. or 5:00 p.m. on the 15th, August 11th at 9:00 a.m. or 5:00 p.m., and August 15th at 1:00 p.m. And you can see that those days also line up to the days that we're distributing iPads. Middle school, grade 6 is August 8 from 9 to 11, and from 1 to 3 by last name, and new students in grades 7th and 8th is August 10th at 3:00 p.m. New elementary students is August 18th at 4:00 p.m. And then kindergarten parents and guardians, the orientation is August 22nd at 5:30. And then a reminder that new kindergarten students begin their school year with parents and guardians on August 24th and 25th by last name. The kindergartners' first full day of school is August 26th. And again, the complete details is on our website to those orientations. So, we're rolling out, we're moving to a more paperless system for communications and with our information through Power School. And so, as you log into Power School, as schedules become available, you will see that there is a new forms tab in Power School. And right now, the only forms that we've opened up are the student address and contacts, emergency contacts, and then permissions and agreements, like networks and iPad agreements. It's strongly encouraged that you take a look at these contacts and emergency contacts to make sure that they're updated. No longer is that emergency card that you have to fill out for your children, like you've done, you know, for the history of them being in school. We are moving towards health forms in the future, but we are not ready to unveil that piece of the puzzle yet. But as we move forward throughout the school year, more and more of this system is going to become paperless to the point where, hopefully, in the 23-24 school year, you don't get that packet of information on the first day of school from your children to fill out. And those of you with multiple children, you have to fill it out multiple times. That's going away with this new paperless system. So, just pay attention to that. There's a forms tab on Power School, and if you would go in and just make sure that the address, contact, and emergency contact information is correct for your children, that is our first step moving forward. Please disregard the emails that came from Final Forms. That was a vendor that we were using. We are no longer using them as a vendor. No idea why or how those emails got sent, but that's not the system that we're using. So, please, anything from Final Forms in the future, disregard. Hopefully, we've done our due diligence on our side, that that doesn't happen in the future. If you remember, in May, we piloted a school dismissal manager system at our elementary, at one of our elementary schools, and I'm happy to say that that was a successful pilot to the point where we are going to move that into operations for all of our elementary schools. So, student absences, late arrivals, early dismissals, and dismissal changes should be reported to the child's school through the school dismissal manager app. It can be accessed through a web browser, iOS, or an Android app, and then this will be in place of having to contact the elementary's attendance or child check phone line. And again, this is elementary schools only at this time, and once again, the complete details about school dismissal manager are available on our website. So, gone are the days of, can somebody go find me a half a sheet of paper so that I can give you your early dismissal. Safety and security trainings, I just wanted everybody to be aware that this year, we're going to be having safety and security trainings at our buildings as our teachers arrive on campus, and so that in conjunction with law enforcement on Thursday, August 18th, at the high school and the middle school campus, so here from 8:00 to 3:00. The campus is basically closed. The buildings are closed during those times. There will be police presence on the campus. These are drills that we're doing with, in conjunction with our Ross and Westview Police Officers. Same thing's true with Friday, August 19th, at Westview and Ross in the morning, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00. And then those drills will be at McIntyre and High Cliff from 12:00 to 3:00 on Friday, the 19th. Again, they are drills that we do on an annual basis or on a regular basis with our local police departments. And you will see police presence on those campuses, and the buildings are closed. Any questions from the Board?
For the iPads, will an email be sent out about reminding people to sign up for the insurance?
Yes. Go ahead, Beth.
Yes, that's also, you're going to see that in the enrollment express, where you see that in Power School with the forms. That information is also there. So, when you tab through those screens, you'll get all that information as well. All of that is going to be pushed, as well as directions as how to access all of that material. I think Heather's going out tomorrow.
Well, so the undergrad.
Right, but for the high school students, right. So, we'll be able to make sure that you have that. So, all of that will be available and accessible to everyone.
Okay, thanks.
And all that has to be done through the desktop version, correct, not the app of Power School?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public comments on agenda items. So, next, we have a presentation with project updates from SiteLogic on the Westview Elementary Construction Project.
Okay, alright. Well, thank you once again for allowing us an opportunity to give you an update on the project. What we're going to try to do tonight is follow the same format that we did at the end of the schematic design. We are now at the end of design development. So, back in June, early June, we provided an update for you, which included a virtual tour of the space, which Dan and Trevor will do for us in a moment. But if we could go to the next, oh, I guess I can, I can do that. There we go. Give a little bit of an overview, and then we'll do the virtual tour, talk a little bit about where we are cost-wise, some milestones moving forward, the Phase 1 update, which is moving along really well, and then just a quick update on the MySiteIQ. We have been very busy since we last were in front of you. Design development is really, after the floor plan has been settled upon and where all the rooms are going to be, it's starting to really get into the details of what each of these spaces look like. The following phase, the construction document phase, which is where we're going next, is really the finite detail to get the documents ready for bidding purposes. So, things are moving along well. There's a lot of moving parts. A lot more people are involved, thus Dan and Trevor here tonight. So, I'll turn it over to them. They'll give a quick virtual tour, and then I'll come back and finish the update.
Thanks, Mike, and good evening. My name's Dan D'Amico. I'm with Schrader Group Architecture. Also have Trevor Mitchell here. He's a project architect for the new Westview Elementary renovation project. I get to do the pretty part here. We can start with the building aerial. So, as we've gone through the DD phase, not much has changed on the exterior. You'll see much of the same from the last video. Most of what we're focusing on now is the interior. So, over the past couple months and weeks, we've been having a lot of meetings. We had user meetings with all the end-users, the different teacher groups, to really focus on the interior. One of the things that Mike will give an update on is the summer project, I believe, and you can see a lot of the new windows going in, which look pretty beautiful out there. We saw today. A couple other meetings that we've been having would be with the food service group, many weekly meetings with Mike's team, the MEP. But like I said, so far, exterior-wise, we're pretty settled in. Now, we're getting into the detailing of this part. The next video, as we get, this kind of finishes wrapping around, we'll get into some of the things that have been changing over the past couple weeks. Any questions on the exterior as this kind of floats by? You can go to the next one. So, over the past couple of weeks, some of the changes that we've been making, some of it's related to national events and conversations we've had with the school district. So, yeah, the entry to ground, that one. So, as we come into the building, one of the things you would have seen in the last video, there was a lot of transparency between the corridor and the classrooms, a lot of glass. We've had a lot of conversations regarding safety in the schools, as far as, and also costs. So, one of the things that, as we've gone through and refined the design interior-wise, we've actually minimized a lot of the interior glass for the safety of the children. And that was a lot of conversations with the administration, and Jesse, and Dr. Manarino. The other thing that we've been focusing on is the central stair. As we've gotten into the detail of the code review, we've edited the walking path on the second floor. So, there's a corridor that connects across the one side and continues to loop around, so you don't get stuck in a dead end. Again, it's good for safety, but it also helped us with some of the code nitty-gritty stuff that we've been getting into. We've been working closely with Mike's group to figure out all the different fire ratings, cutting off the hallways with different glass partitions to kind of minimize that center core that could be locked down, as well as starting to get into the interior finishes. So, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be setting up a meeting to start picking colors, really refining the interior finishes as we kind of work through continuing to fit out the rooms with all the different casework pieces So, more of the same here, coming back up through that central stairwell. We've been working with the structural. Trevor and myself are out all day today at the elementary school, gathering final measurements, so we can continue to document in detail this central stairwell, along with other areas of the building. But you can see here, some of the glass, before, a lot of that glass went floor to ceiling. In some areas where we're overlooking the atrium space, we kept it full height. But into a lot of the classrooms, we created just higher clear-story transom windows to keep the wall solid below, but still allow some daylight to penetrate into those rooms. And that's pretty much it. Any questions? Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Mike.
Thanks, Dan. And as he mentioned, not a whole lot of change, but he did point out some of the things that we've been, we've been working on very closely. So, moving on, as far as what that cost, what you just saw, we are hovering right around the same number that we had at schematic, which is, which is good news. We've had some value engineering, as we mentioned, reduction in some glass, but we also have found a few things as it relates to the existing utilities, some of the existing pipe, the terracotta pipe. We've found that where there is going to be some more extensive underground work that's going to need to be done. We're wrapping up this detailed estimate. This is a much more detailed estimate than a schematic estimate, because we have more information. So, we're doing a lot of quantity takeoffs. But right now, feeling pretty good about that. In addition to that, despite the hyperinflation and supply chain issues, we are hoping that, based upon what's happening nationally with the economy, that the contractors come the fall are going to get hungry and hopefully sharpen their pencils. So, I think we've got really good timing. I've mentioned that before. So, fingers crossed on that, and we'll keep you posted. But we continue to look for value engineering. We work with the administration team, as well as our engineers and architects, to try to make sure that we're good stewards of the money that is being spent here. So, and that number is, you know, again, the last time it was around 36.9. We're, again, hovering around that, and that's all in. I always like to say that. It's not just hard costs, it's all the soft costs associated with the permits, the core drilling, all those items are part of that. As far as the next steps, we will be moving into construction documents, as I mentioned, from now until mid-October. Final estimate in early October, so a similar presentation a couple of months from now, as far as where we are. We're in the process of finalizing the phasing plan. I do have a couple of quick phasing plans to show you just our thought process and how we're moving along. But that'll really come to a conclusion. The principal, Jesse Simpson, has been fantastic in being flexible with us while we maintain the educational functionality of the space during the renovations. Bidding period still scheduled for late October to mid-November, and the hope is, is to award the public bid and the Giza portion early to mid-December, and realizing that that's not a great time for a board to review those type of major decisions. I will say that because of hunting season, which a lot of contractors are very much involved with, if you don't receive bids prior to Thanksgiving, it's really not a month delay. It becomes a six-to-eight week delay because of what happens through the holidays. So, we're really working towards that right now to support the schedule and get a jump on, again, I know I sound like a broken record, but the supply chain issues that are out there. We've heard recently on some of our projects, that just switch gear is like 60 weeks out, which is, which is insane. So, we're trying to manage that as best we can. Construction phase would then be January of 2023 through December of 2024. And this is kind of what we're looking at right now. We're starting to find areas that we can separate. And again, the trade-off with the district is this. We want to make sure we're maintaining safety, number one, educational functionality, but we also want to allow large enough pieces of work so that the cost doesn't go up. So, we're allowing the contractors to get into a rhythm, and that'll help, again, help with the cost. Our biggest challenge is going to be that stair, stairwell that Dan showed you in the middle of the space. That's going to be our most difficult challenge, because it does take up a lot of that core area. Obviously, we'll focus on the addition right out of the gate as well, and that'll, that'll help provide some transition space as well. So, we'll be working through these plans, share those with you as they become finite, and of course, Jesse is the key component of all of that, because he has to live with this for the next two years. Moving on into the Phase 1 update, new boilers have been received. They're set in place. Beginning to pipe that, the breaching is in. We're working on installing that as well to the existing chimney. And that work, all of that work is scheduled to be done, obviously, before the heating season. And things are moving along great there. New hot water heaters here, softeners here, all of that is being installed, and piping is ongoing. Window frames, glass glazing, that's continuing throughout the building. Any of you that have driven by can see the result of that. Right now, we are changing out some of the lentils that were definitely defected on the west elevation, which is the Perry Highway elevation. The windows will then follow. All of the windows will be complete before the start of school, which is actually ahead of schedule. We thought there was going to be areas that we would have to still be working. There will be, some of the doors, the new doors are going to be installed after the fact. That's a plan that we're working through with Jesse as well. A lot of that has to do with hardware, not being able to get that in an expedited time, get that in an expedited timeframe. Masonry will all be wrapped up as well. They're finishing up the lentils, and then they patch on the west elevation, patch the masonry, and then all of the masonry work will be, will be completed. A few photographs for you. As you can see, the new boilers going in, some of the other water softeners and breaching, photograph of the breaching that is going to connect with the boilers, and then ultimately to the chimney. So, a lot of, a lot of stuff that you don't necessarily see, but it's kind of the brains of the building, and it was in great need of repair. And it's really, you know, advantageous. What happened this year is, you know, we recommended some early packages, and we started, you know, in the mechanical room, because you're not really disrupting a lot. So, we were able to get that done. But I do applaud the Board for moving forward with the windows as well. Just about 30 days after that contract was signed, the cost of glazing went up over 30%. And this was a large package. This was about a $2 million package. So, the district saved substantial amount of money by expediting that work. So, again, kudos to the district in that. So, here you see some of the new windows. This is the west elevation where the scaffolding is going up, and you can see some of the finished product, really looks sharp. Another elevation as well. So, things are moving along really well. And any questions on Phase 1 at this point? Okay. And just to wrap up, as far as the MySiteIQ, gave an update last time. We've had an opportunity to continue to meet with Jerry and with Kevin to go through the facility study, the overall facility study that we did. And we now have most of that information put into your MySiteIQ. So, we now actually have, it's set up for North Hills, and it's still being tweaked, of course, but you're going to have a lot of great data from all of this. You know, you've got your total square footage, you've got your number of facilities, average age, on and on. And through all of this, we're identifying potential projects. They will be prioritized, and then ultimately, you'll, you'll make selections for each calendar year. You can see that the data, as it populates, this is kind of telling you, again, square footage per building, average age of each of one of your buildings, kind of a geography of where your buildings are located. Then it starts to break down into, okay, what are some of the possible projects that exist? You know, you've got, you've got units at the district administration, you've got units at the high school that need to be addressed. And then what this does is, it'll, it can show you what your spend could be, and a lot of times, districts will want to even that out a little bit, depending on what the priorities are. And then it also identifies, of those projects, where are you spending your money? Are you spending it on site work? Are you spending it on HVAC? Are you spending it on plumbing? Those type of things are identified. So, that is something that ultimately, the Board will have an opportunity to help prioritize, and then choose projects, and then move forward. This drills down even further, starts to get into specific projects per year, and where, you know, where those projects are happening. And then finally, this is more, more specific. It just, that's all for the middle school alone. And you can drill down. There's many ways you can, you can drill down. And then we've got now a timeline tool, and this is kind of an example of what you might be thinking about as we move forward. So, right now, we're kind of in a preliminary stage of the MySiteIQ. Once the prioritization is established, let's say that's September, October, then you can select your year-one projects possibly in November, then move into what you wanted, how you want to procure those, whether they fit under a Giza, whether they are maintenance projects that your staff can do, if they're public bid, et cetera. And doing that in a fashion that allows you, again, the lead time to make that happen for the next summer. Again, it's unfortunate with the supply chain, but that is why, you know, we are suggesting that projects move along a little bit quicker. Then you have the procurement phase, which is in the off-season, if you will. And then, when the kids are out, you've got the opportunity to start to address some of your maintenance issues without impacting the educational function of the schools. So, that's a quick update. This is a very, very powerful tool, and at the appropriate time, we can get into as much detail as you want.
Is the administration being trained on how to use this tool, or will you be managing this tool for the district?
Yes. They've been provided credentials, so they will be able to get in and view. We manage certain portions of it, but there is enough that the district will have that they'll be able to use it as a tool, and not, I wouldn't even need to be here. You know, Jerry or Kevin will be able to communicate to you on what those projects are and how you would, how you would move forward. So...
Sure. But aside from credentials, they're being trained on actually how to use it?
Yes.
And all the data that you are gathering or have gathered, it's already all in there?
It is.
So, what's ready to go?
Yep. And it is a, it's always a work in progress, I will say this. We, there's several school districts where we have a continuous MySiteIQ, if you will. Once the, I've said this before, but once the season is done, and you've, you know, you've checked the boxes on five or six projects, you reconvene, and you may reprioritize. You may have thought that Plan Year 2, you were going to do this, but now you want to push that to Plan Year 3, because something else has come up. And this tool will adjust accordingly. So, any other questions on anything that Dan or myself have presented tonight?
Yeah, I just have one. Thanks again for the thorough presentation. Just, this is more anecdotally, but you've mentioned several times about the supply chain issues. In the construction industry and the management industry that you're in, have you seen any positive signs turning for the better in this situation that we're looking at here?
I can't say that right now. And I'm coming off of a board meeting last night at Mount Pleasant, where I had to tell them that they weren't going to get their fire alarm system. So, I'm, you know, knee-deep in that type of mentality. We are seeing, I think, I think we're going to see more of a break on the costs before we see a break on lead times. That is really what the trend has been right now. It's the chips that go into a lot of these unit ventilators, or, you know, DOES units, et cetera. It's odd. It's not necessarily the manufacturing of the, of the unit itself. It's the chip that makes it work that is causing a lot of, a lot of the problems. So, it's a great question. I'm hoping, you know, better news in the next month, you know, as it relates to supply chain. So...
I'm sure it's the million-dollar question everyone in that industry is asking. I just figured it'd be insight, so...
Never been through this before. This is, this is all new territory for a lot of us, so...
Appreciate it.
Yep. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, as always, for the thorough presentation and the update. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Little, you are up with education.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this week, the Education Committee met. As per the email I sent to you folks earlier today, the agenda is on there for your review. But I just wanted to make an announcement here, so that as we prepare for the 2022-23 school year, it's exciting to welcome our new kindergarten students. Our current kindergarten class enrollment numbers across the district are as follows. High Cliff at 85, McIntyre at 102, Ross at 81, and Westview at 80. That current total brings us to 348 students who will become the class of, we're all going to feel old, 2035. So, just wanted to give that update to everyone. But up next is Dr. Williams will be providing us with an educational update.
Summer is a very busy time for our curriculum. So, every year in February, I send out an email to all of our curriculum leaders and ask them if they have any teachers or any courses that they need to revise or they need to write curriculum for. If we revise or write curriculum, it's based on one of three reasons. It's because the standards change, we're offering a new course, or because we're updating the resources of the curriculum. the resources of the curriculum. For instance, we're getting a new textbook, our software, the newest addition, some type of change maybe in projects that we're going to ask the students to do. But that's why we typically revise or write curriculum. Just a reminder too, our curriculum is based upon the Pennsylvania Department of Education standards. We must be in alignment with those, so that is our guiding foundation when we write curriculum. This summer, we had an awful lot of people write curriculum, so special thanks before I get started to all the teachers. They spent a lot of hours and a lot of hard work, working on their curriculum. But we had a lot of departments that did need to revise or write their curriculum. For anyone having a change in standards, we only had one department, and that was our K through 12 School Counseling Department. They had to revise their standards because the American Association of School Counselors had updated their standards, so we wanted to make sure we had the updated verbiage. We also have four new courses this year. They're all being offered at the high school, and I believe I shared those with you earlier this past school year. Communications for Professional Success, Literacy for Careers and Personal Growth, both semester courses for seniors in English. We also have a Right to Start CHS or AP course that's making sure students have the study skills to embrace those courses and the rigor that's intended with those. And also a Right to Start High School with a focus on study skills also for those students who are moving across. So those are four new courses that we wrote curriculum for as well. Then we had courses that, as I said, we updated the resources or the curriculum for, again, new software, new textbooks and so forth. At the high school, you can see we had a variety of courses, everything from our AP Environmental Science, our CHS German 1 and 2. We are in alignment with University of Pittsburgh for that. They tell us what textbook we need to use and they basically give us the curriculum, so we had to go ahead and update that. CHS Psychology, Psychology, Sociology, History of Politics of the Keystone State and Steel City, and also Health was a new textbook. At the elementary and middle school, again, updating those resources, new textbooks or new software. Our K through 5 Computer Literacy, some software updates for our programming. K through 6 ELA, we added some more resources. You heard about that in depth, actually with our K through 6 Curriculum Leader who happens to be here tonight in the audience, Mrs. Kovac. Our Literacy Arts, we're really excited about that at the middle school. We're adding study skills into that course to help facilitate that for all of our students. And also a new textbook for our eighth graders for their health course as well. Continuing on the same vein with curriculum, if you recall, we had Mr. Kerr here who was our K through 6 Math Curriculum Leader. And we spoke last year about how we were going to do a math pilot this year with two programs. One is Math in Focus 2020. We currently use Math in Focus, but we have the Math in Focus, I believe, 2016. So we're going to pilot the Math in Focus 2020 program. We're also looking at Reveal and Reveal Math, I'm sorry, excuse me, as the other pilot program. So we are going to be piling that in grades K through 6. As you can see, we have a number of teachers who graciously volunteered to be pilot teachers across all four elementaries as well as the middle school. So it's a total of 32 pilot teachers this year. Our teachers are going to be trained, actually beginning next week, who are piloting Reveal Math. They're also going to be trained in Math in Focus, I believe, the week after. So if your child happens to be in one of the classrooms where there is going to be a math pilot being taught, you will receive a letter that will explain to you which program it is. Is it going to be Math in Focus 2020 or Reveal Math? And then it's also going to specifically state a summary of the program, highlighting the specific skills that the students will learn. Make sure that parents and students both know how they can access the program. It's going to be through Class Link, which is a link on the iPad. And it's also going to provide a summary of resources available with the program. There are going to be a lot more details shared about the piloted programs at both the elementary and the middle school sixth grade curriculum night. So please make sure you come to those evenings, not just because of our math programs, but because our teachers do a great job explaining all of our curriculum. We're very proud of it and excited to share it with you as parents. And again, as I said, those teachers are going to be trained here very, very shortly. Last but not least, I know when we first talked about the K through 6, looking at piloting this, we were concerned about the vertical articulation with the curriculum. What's going to happen if sixth grade chooses a different math program? What's that going to look like with seventh and eighth? And how do we build that program forward? So we were able to contact Reveal Math, and I asked them for teacher kits for all the seventh grade math teachers and the eighth grade math teachers. They will not be piloting that program. However, the teachers will be going through those materials and they will participate in sharing feedback as to their thoughts about what they think that program is. So we invite them to that discussion. So a year from now, when Mr. Kerr comes back and gives us his curriculum proposal, if he says, hey, we're going with Reveal and Math, we're going to need to talk about what that looks like in seventh and eighth grade to ensure that vertical articulation is correct and we can build those skills to move across to the high school. Okay? So that's it for me. Any questions for me?
We would potentially be implementing the new math curriculum at the beginning of next year. Is that correct?
Correct, 2324, correct. This is the pilot year, and then we will come back with the curriculum proposal and look to implement the new program in 2324. Yes.
I just want to say, you know, just having a front row seat to this and keeping communication with you, it seems like it's just changing a program, but it's quite a heavy lift. And just wanted to thank everyone in the district involved in getting us here to this point. So just wanted to recognize those folks and thank you.
I appreciate that. The teachers, Mr. Kerr, they all, all the teachers, the pilot teachers, they are phenomenal. Just another credit to how great our teachers are. I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Just one quick thing.
Sure.
So for parents who may be a little bit intimidated or a little bit nervous, it's always good to kind of reinforce that both programs, both pilot programs are aligned with Pennsylvania's state standards.
Absolutely.
It's just more or less the delivery method, some of the strategies and things like that.
It's a new textbook, it's new resources, but it is aligned. Everything we teach is aligned to the Pennsylvania Department of Education standards. We have to do that. So yes, it is aligned.
Will you be soliciting any parent feedback on these programs?
Yes, I believe Mr. Kerr is going to be looking for feedback. And we've actually asked him, I've talked to Mr. Kerr and asked if he would be able to come in and periodically give updates from the teachers as well as seeing what parents and what students feel. I think that's very, very important, so we want to keep everybody in the loop so we know how this is progressing. That is the goal, to be very transparent through this process. Because it is, as Mr. Little said, to shift to a different program or a new program, even if it's the 2020 of Math in Focus, even though we have it now, it is a shift. So we want to make sure we're being very transparent in sharing all that information with everyone. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Moving on, we have several items up for consideration tonight. On our agendas, first up is item number three, the Health and Safety Plan for the 2022-23 school year. Description is that the board approved the North Hill School District Health and Safety Plan for the 2022-23 school year as per attached. Our next item is the North Hills High School Student Handbook and Guide for Parents. This is that the board approved the North Hills High School Student Handbook and Guide for Parents as per the attached. Item number five is that we approve the North Hills Middle School Guide and Handbook for Parents for the 2022-23 school year as per attached. Item number six is that we approve the North Hills Elementary Student Handbooks and Guide for Parents as well. Item number seven is the Idea Use of Funds Agreement. This is that the board approved the Idea Section 619 Pass Through Funds Use of Funds Agreement for the 2022-23 per the attached. This is a sub-agreement for the implementation of Individuals with Disabilities Act, Section 619, by and through the Allegheny Intermediate Unit and the North Hill School District for the project period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. Some of the relevant facts, the funds will be used to support appropriate services to school each children aged five in kindergarten who are eligible for services through these funds. Item number eight is that the board approved the 2022-2023 Waterfront Learning Annual Agreement as per attached. Waterfront Learning serves as the K through 6 Virtual Learning Option for students that is facilitated by our teachers. And finally, item number nine is that the board approved the Acceptance of Developing Future Special Educators Grant in the amount of $20,000. The purpose of this grant is to establish or expand experimental learning opportunities aligned to special education career pathways with purposeful recruitment and marketing to future special educators. The superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve Education Items 3 through 9.
Dee Spade will second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Dr. Manarino, I know it's attached, but could you just go over at a very high level some of the details for the Health and Safety Plan and sort of explain why we need to yet again approve this?
Sure. And we will yet again have to approve it in the 2324 school year, I think, for the last time, correct? We have to do this this year and next year because of the ESRS funds that we're receiving from the government. So that's the reasoning behind why we have to do this. So it is different. A is the universal and correct wearing of masks under the ESRS requirement. And our strategies are that masks are optional for the 2223 school year in all buildings at all times unless directed by the superintendent or directed by Board Action. So a lot of the, and B is that we had our classrooms set up in rows and distancing and everything. And I know that the CDC is even changing those guidelines coming out, I believe, as early as maybe tomorrow. It now says unless authorized by the superintendent, all unnecessary furniture items shall be removed. So we've had discussions with the principals the last couple of days to talk about what is the furniture that's going to return? What are we going to do with classroom setups? And we are going to move back to pods and we're going to do those types of things that we know is best for collaboration and learning. Some of the furniture is going to return. I know the essential items like in elementary schools, kidney tables and reading tables and those things that I know are so near and dear to elementary teachers' hearts as Sherry's smiling over there are going to return. We're going to return those reading areas that had to be removed because we have desks so far apart from each other. But there also are some things that we have still said are unessential at this time and they're not going to be returned. And that's the reason why it says unless authorized by the superintendent. Dr. Williams and I took tour of the buildings today. We were looking at cafeteria spaces and putting the cafeterias back to the way they once were, which then just creates much more space for students in the cafeteria. So that's why it says unless authorized by the superintendent, because there's still a lot of areas that we still do need to keep separated or items of furniture that we still do need to keep out at this time. But other than that, it's going to look a lot more like October or August of 2019 than it is of August of 2021. So that's that part. And then I think the other highlight in here that I do want to talk about is that the district will not contact trace nor identify close contacts of positive COVID cases. And we will not require healthy students to isolate or quarantine due to close contact of COVID cases. The district will not track count or place COVID cases on our website in the 2223 school year, so that tracker is coming down off the website.
So is the high school cafeteria going back to normal?
No, actually, the high school cafeteria is going to remain the same, but the beauty of that is we were getting new cafeteria furniture for the high school. It should be here January, if we're lucky, supply chain issues that we just heard about. So that's where that cafeteria setup will change. So that cafeteria looks like it did last year. But they were, they were getting closer to normal at the high school than they were at the other schools.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions on the Health and Safety Plan. The furniture that will or will not be returning to the elementary schools? I know that the, some of the teachers that had purchased those like active seating type things, are those returning or not? Do you know?
I'd have to ask Amy where those would be going, who asks, like that type of thing. I'm not sure. That wasn't one of the things that was on our list to look at today.
It wasn't. And I know Mrs. Matthews is making a comprehensive list and we're trying to kind of phase in and prioritize what is most important. And I know the teachers spoke to their principals saying, can we please have, you know, our carpet back so we can do reading? Can we do that? Can we please have our kidney tables back? We need our easel for our primary students for the big books for reading. See, I listen well, Mrs. Kovac. So those are the things that we've kind of prioritized based on some conversations that they've had with their teachers. So it might be coming back sooner rather than later. We're just trying to prioritize how we're bringing those things back.
Okay. And then, Dr. Manarino, you said that the CDC is setting out, putting out new guidance tomorrow? Was that ju, or soon, if not tomorrow? Was that just for the physical distancing or was that for everything? What have you heard?
I don't even know what they're going to say.
I think it was about quarantining and removing those recommendations, but please, that's what I think I read. I'm not officially saying that's what they're doing.
I haven't heard anything about that. Okay, and then so my last question is, I mean, I guess now, depending on what they say, whenever the new guidance comes out, you know, I also am extremely sick of masks. But at this point today, you know, the CDC is still saying that in areas of high, that are marked high, that we should still universally mask. So I guess, so my question, I guess for me, I wish it said that. But so I guess my question is, if they continue to leave that guidance up and it just says, and our plan says, you know, unless otherwise directed by us or by you, I mean, what would you see as a reason we would go back to universal masking if not the CDC's recommendation?
An action of this board.
Okay.
That's what I would see.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say, switching with the student handbooks, thanks for putting the overall 300-foot level of what changed. Well, I do appreciate reading student handbooks. It's nice to know, hey, at the beginning, these are the things that changed. A lot of it seemed to be freshening of language to meet requirements and things of that nature. So I just wanted to say thanks for that and making me ease of it, you know, navigating it.
And with this grant, I am really excited to see this. I think that it looks like our district has been doing a lot with these partner classes and really trying to work on inclusivity. And so I mean, I was really excited to see this. Whoever worked on this, just big thank you for that. I think it's going to be great for our kids.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? I opposed?
I'm going to vote no on three.
Okay, motion carries. Mrs. Ponyatowski, you are up with Athletics and Activities.
Okay, we just have one item under Athletics and Activities, and it's that the board approved the North Hills Wrestling Club's donation of strength training equipment for the high school, middle school wrestling rooms at a cost of approximately $6,000, which is very nice to see. We really appreciate that. Some of this equipment includes strength racks, weight sleds, exercise balls, and some Olympic lifting bars and things that'll be great for them to use. Yeah, it's wonderful. So the equipment will be used during the off-season as well as during the season to improve the overall strength and conditioning for our wrestling team. The superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve Athletics and Activities, item number two.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I have a question about it because I know we bought some new things last year for the athletic, the gym equipment. This is specific just for the wrestling club, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a little weight room inside the wrestling room off to the back, and that equipment has been, is old and outdated, and that's what this is going to replace.
Okay.
It's really two different rooms.
Right, okay. Just logistically, thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Santucci, it is your turn for Buildings and Grounds.
All right, so just a general overview. If you've been driving around the township or the borough, you might have noticed that there's a significant amount of renovations going on. We have our tennis courts up here that is under construction. We also have Marderelli Stadium, which is being re-turfed, hopefully in time, you know, fingers crossed, right, for Coach Carey to get on the field there as well as the band. So, but as far as the paving is concerned, coming up to the driveway, that is all completed. However, now we do have a request for the improvement of stormwater management. So a description of that request is that the board awards a bid to improve the stormwater and erosion management into Gertie's Run to Dragon Contracting in the amount of $185,000. So stormwater from the paving that was just completed at the secondary campus and Fifth Avenue exit needs to be a concrete pipe about 100 feet over Gertie's Run. The hill that water flows over has eroded in the soil and created a condition where the hillside will continue to deteriorate as possibly and possibly cause the hillside to become unstable. So some other information was that four companies responded to the specs that were advertised per the Public School Purchasing Code. Pendot and the owner of the property near the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Rochester have made repairs to the stormwater system. Dragon Contracting was the lowest bidder. So the impact on the capital budget will be as follows, approximately $185,000. Bid tabulation from the proposing contractors is attached. So the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve Buildings and Grounds, item number two.
Dee Spade will second that.
Any discussion?
I just want to say...
I just want to say that it's, it's important that we do this. You know, when we talk about stormwater management and mitigation, it really isn't an exciting thing to get, you know, get about, but the reality of it is, you know, Ross Township, we're familiar with landslides. I mean, I'll have to mention Reese Run Road and the issues that caused for quite some time. So getting on top of this and ensuring that we don't have those issues is incredibly vital, so it's glad to see that we're, we're moving forward on this.
Any other discussion?
Just to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Little, yeah, if you have driven up Rochester Road, I'm sure that you might have seen a sinkhole at some point down by that business. So like he said, it is good to get on top of it, stay on top of it, because erosion does happen, and we don't want to have to close down Rochester Road to get to our campus. So that's all.
Okay, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Can I ask a question about buildings and grounds before we move on?
Nope, too late.
Okay, I'm not kidding. The turfing at McIntyre, is that, the last time I drove by McIntyre, it looked like that hadn't been done yet, is that still?
It's going to be a fall project.
Fall project, okay.
Same thing's true with the Ross field.
Okay, well, I haven't driven by that one.
Yeah.
Going off of Sandy's, did we ever get the change order? We had talked about doing the outfield.
It was too much.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mrs. Neese, it is your turn for community and intergovernmental relations.
Okay, well, before I go into mine, I just want to say I got to meet with the PTO, PTA, and PTSO gals this morning, and they have been working really hard to get everything ready for the back-to-school socials that are going to be happening, so I hope all of you that have elementary kids get to go to them. They're going to be really fun, and just in general, they've been working hard, so I'd like to give them a big thank you for everything that they do, especially going into the beginning of the school year because it's super crazy. So we do have two other things. The first one is that the board approved the annual contract with the Ross Westview Emergency Medical Services Authority per the attached. This contract provides ambulance service for unlimited emergency services to the school district for one year. The annual fee of $2,500 has remained the same since the 2008-2009 school year, and this is something that was already included in our general fund budget for 2022-23. The second thing is that the board approved the memorandum of understanding between Northgate School District and North Hills School District for an emergency student relocation contingency plan per the attached. Northgate School District has requested that North Hills School District be prepared to assist with the relocation and sheltering of Northgate students in the event an emergency occurs that requires Northgate students to evacuate during school hours. This student relocation contingency plan originated back in September of 2013 when Northgate Superintendent made the request to North Hills School District, and the North Hills Board of Education gave its verbal approval. In September of 2017, this plan was formalized via memorandum of understanding between the two school districts, and the attached MOU is a renewal of this agreement between North Hills and Northgate School Districts. So the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve community and intergovernmental relations, items two and three.
Dee Spade will second that.
Any discussion?
I guess, I guess I just have a question about that. Is that, do we have a relationship like that with another district? Is this something that districts typically do?
Northgate doesn't have busing, and that's the biggest issue for them. So this is in the event that they're in a situation that they've got to quickly evacuate, they really don't have a means to do it. And so that's the reason why we did this. So what we would do is use our buses, bring them to our campus, and that way we can control it because it would be here, so you could control the in and out of the flow, and then the pickup procedures would be similar to what our safety plan is. We don't have a plan, but each of the buildings have an evacuation place, and it's, I think it's to our advantage that we obviously do have transportation, that we, they would be able to transport us there, but the, the big issue with Northgate, they don't have buses, and so that's, that's why this is so important to them.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to make the observation that with the Ross Westview MS contract, it has not changed since 2008, 2009, in a time where there's constantly charges going up, and especially in the industry of emergency management services, you know, including fire and whatnot, and the budget shortfalls they have, that's nothing short of a miracle for that to remain the same. So, you know, that's pretty remarkable that it hasn't changed all that time.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we are on to finance. So this evening, we have the general fund bills, the capital project fund bills, the food service fund bills, budget transfers, payroll for the month of June 2022 in the amount of $3,612,337.55, and for July 2022 in the amount of $3,133,951.12. We have a request for the board to award the bid for dual-purpose copy paper to Liberty Paper in the amount of $37,590. We have a request for the board to award the cyber insurance coverage for the annual premium of $21,222, $222 through Travelers Insurance and Surety Company of America, and then we have a request for the board to authorize the annual petty cash funds per the attached. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve finance items two through seven.
Dee Spade will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have one quick question, and this is going to sound silly, but the copy paper, was that like the cheapest copy paper that there is? Is that?
It's actually, for this day and age, they're the only ones that even have it.
Really?
Talking to other ones that even historically have participated with us, they said, we might give you a price, but we don't, we're not even sure we're going to have paper to give.
I guess, the reason why I'm asking is that, because I, I know that it's an expense, and I understand that. Sometimes the, the copy paper has a tendency to take in humidity, and it jams the copier, and that is so frustrating whenever you only have a couple minutes to go roll off some copies. So if, you know, judging from the weather that we've had this past week, I, I just want to make sure that we're giving our, our teachers good quality paper. I know it sounds so silly, but there's nothing more frustrating than a jammed copier whenever you're trying to roll off some things. So, but if that's the only option, then it is what it is.
Well, I think the best thing we did was put the roof, repaired the roof on the warehouse where that's stored, and that kind of has cut back on that kind of activity, and we tend not to buy more than one truckload at a time, so we're not storing too much down there and we're using it. But papers are hard to come by.
And that's perfect, thank you.
Mrs. Mathis, I have to interrupt. I provided you with an incorrect motion. The motion should be items two through nine. My apologies.
Oh, okay, no worries. I'll remake that motion then. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve finance items two through nine.
Dee Spade will second that.
Sure, that changes everything. Any, any additional, any additional discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Muth, this is for you under item A, under cyber insurance renewal. The, the several policies, I'm just going to call them add-ons for lack of a better term, those are because of previous claims that we had to make to add supplemental or?
No, it's pretty consistent with what we've had before. It's that in the industry, they're requiring much higher levels of security because of the incidents nationwide that are going on.
Okay.
They were actually projecting that might be $80,000 this year, so we're blessed that we only kept it that low based on the infrastructure we have right now.
Sure.
It still could go, go up next year.
Right.
Very tough market.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Philpott, you're up with health and wellness.
Our first meeting of the year is going to be in September. We are currently working on getting it scheduled, and Dr. Bazila, Mr. Muth, and I are working on the agenda, so if anybody has anything they want to talk about, want us to talk about in terms of nursing, counseling, food service, mental health, please let me know, and we will put it on the agenda for September, and I can give you an update at our meeting after that.
Thank you. Miss, Mrs. Spade, it's your turn for personnel.
Okay, personnel items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve personnel items one through seven.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Manorino, I believe, has a statement to raise.
Yes, with, with that vote tonight, the board has approved the hiring of Megan Watlett as our assistant principal at North Hills High School. We are very excited to welcome Megan, who comes to us from Sharp Tier's Valley High School, where she has served as the assistant principal since 2020. During her time at Sharp Tier's Valley, Ms. Watlett also served as student clubs and activities and served as the coordinator for several school-wide programs, including the school's student assistance program, their No Place for Hate program, and their positive behavior support system. Ms. Watlett began her career in education as a high school learning support teacher, first in the Franklin Regional Middle School, and then later at the Knox High School. She went on to work as an English teacher at Camden McMillan High School, and then as a school counselor in the Butler Area School District. She received her undergraduate degree in English, secondary education, seven through 12, and special education, seven through 12, from Washington and Jefferson College, and her master's degree is in counseling from Duquesne University, and her principal certifications are from the University of Pittsburgh. She will start with us at our high school in mid-September, and Ms. Watlett replaces Hannah Minsmoyer, who served as assistant principal at North Hills High School since 2019. I would personally like to thank Hannah for her dedication to the high school and to our district. She was an asset to my administrative team, especially with the challenges faced during the COVID pandemic. We all wish Hannah all the best as she continues her career in the Mount Lebanon School District.
Thank you. Ms. Kuzera, it is your turn for policies.
Thank you. We have been speaking for some time about combining the employee policies, 300, 400, and 500 series into one. We are, I believe, at our next meeting looking to have a fairly substantial number of policies that are up for review, but do not fear, they're not, there's not a lot of content changes in them, and we'll highlight the ones. There are a few that will have some content changes, but for the most part, it's just a matter of, there's one policy that has, for example, dress code for the different types of employees, and they're all, they all pretty much say the same thing. So we're just combining them into one policy, and I'll kind of highlight the differences, and, and it should be fairly routine. As far as tonight, we have two policies up for second reading, policy 219, revisions to weapons policy, and 225, student discipline revision. So we had a, at our last board meeting, we had a good discussion about both of them. We haven't received any feedback on them from the community, and so the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve policy items two and three.
Dee Spade will second that.
Any discussion?
I mean, my, my feedback on these is the same as it was during first reading, that just there is wording I wish we were including in them.
Any additional discussion? All right, and I will move to a vote. All in favor? Aye opposed?
No.
Yeah, motion carries. Mrs. Rennebeck, do you have an update on AW Baby this night?
No, they're actually meeting tonight, 7 o'clock now. In fact, I didn't email and say that we had a meeting, but I think they do. So I'll make sure I have some kind of an update for the next one.
All right, great. Thank you. Mr. Little, do you have a legislative report?
Yeah, just a few things. It's been a while since we last met, so some things have happened. We're lucky enough to have the PA Legislature finally passed a budget while we were on break that saw some great increases in, in funding here in education. Such those highlights include a 10.83% increase in best, basic education funding from last year, as well as an 8.1% increase in special education funding from last year. More money's in the ready-to-learn block grant funding, and the secondary career and technical education subsidy funding. We have a ways to go as a Commonwealth in, in state funding, but ranking 45th in the country, but it's good to see that there, our legislature's finally taking, you know, education of our children here in the Commonwealth serious, and while we, again, we have a ways to go, it's, it's promising to see that they are, are investing in our future. I talked a few months ago about the school funding lawsuit that was brought against the Commonwealth, the House and the Senate on both sides, and finally, on July 26, attorneys for the school funding lawsuit had their final day in court. They presented oral arguments to the judge during a lively day in the courtroom. The case is now in the judge's hands, the judge's hands, and she has thousands of pages of documents to review, and the expected outcome will probably be months before she issues her decision, but you're seeing a case that was years in the making, finally moving forward. It's going to take some time, but just wanted to give an update on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Little. I understand we have one person signed up for public comments on non-agenda items. Mr. Hoffman? I believe you know our public participation policy, but I'll just read it briefly. We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation, and as much as it provides the board with an important source of ideas, as well as informs us of many concerns in the district, the board has limited public comment by a participant to three minutes in duration, and no participant may speak more than once per meeting on the same topic. Mr. Hoffman?
John Hoffman, 121 Georgetown Avenue. Here's my comments for this evening.
Oh.
So there is an issue with, you know, the Indian, and there is a league called the Indian Premier League that has some deal going on with Disney. I found this on the financial pages, so I don't know all the details, but they may be separating for millions of dollars, and that came, brought, came to me through just regular browsing through financial pages, and I thought about what's happening, you know, with the Indian, and I didn't hear this during our public comment meeting, that there may be businesses around here that may, this may affect their donations to clubs in the district, but just kind of think about that as you're going through this discussion point. My last item is, as usual, I would like to make myself available to volunteer for any committees that, that you have available. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. I would like to announce that the next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Thursday, September 1, 2022, in the North Hills Middle School LPI Room, which is right where we are now, at 6:15 PM, and if there's nothing further from the board, I will move to adjourn the meeting.